Good evening, everyone. Apple says it is 7:00 o'clock, so we are going to start our meeting. I love to see everyone in attendance. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. I see we have a great audience on Zoom as well, so I'm glad the word got out there in regard to our presentation tonight for the budget. We have a very information-heavy meeting tonight as Superintendent Burke presents her budget. Before, she presented what was called a Plus One Budget, which is unique to Granby and designed to educate the community and the Board of Finance at a fiscally prudent budget that would still move our schools forward. The superintendent presented the Plus One Budget with a 5.67% increase. Following a three-board meeting with the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance tasked us to reduce our ask to 3.25%, which is 0.15% less than what it would cost to maintain our status quo despite our growing needs. I would like to commend Superintendent Burke, Nikki Stevenson, as well as the rest of the staff and administration for crunching every single number that you could. Opening old contracts, Nikki in particular, thank you very much for that. Turning over old stones that desperately needed flipping to find every single penny that could help us come to a position where we can make the best possible decisions for our schools and our children. The BOE is being tasked with some exceptionally difficult decisions in extremely tenuous times, and we are very aware of that. We take this job very seriously and want to provide our students with the best because our community deserves it. Funding opportunity or finding opportunities to invest in Granby's education system would bode better for our future, and I hope we can find support within our community to do that. So again, thank you so much for joining. I think we are going to move it along since we have so many things going on right now. Sherri, did you?
I do. So, thank you for the pause between the agenda items. We often have a segment of our agenda called "Awards and Recognition." Given the full evening ahead of us, we did not invite students or community members or faculty to be recognized. However, the month, the month of March, is Board of Education Appreciation Month. And so I'd like to just carve out a few minutes of this important meeting to express our gratitude to our board members, and so I did just prepare a little something to share. This year, our Teacher of the Year, Kristin Leflam, presented each staff member with a handmade Lego keychain. Her message at convocation this fall inspired is the inspiration behind your gift this evening. Mrs. Leflam identified Lego as a powerful metaphor for teamwork. She highlighted the importance of diverse skills, creative problem-solving, resilience in the face of challenge, and the balance between following instructions and fostering innovation. She explained each piece, whether basic or specialized, visible or hidden, contributes to the success of the whole. To me, this is the perfect message for you as board members. I did not create a handmade piece, and to be honest, I'm borrowing the idea entirely because we've been a little busy. But the sentiment and the heartfelt gratitude behind this gift is certainly meaningful. As volunteers, you put in long hours for the good of our school district and the greater community of Granby. From Mrs. Leflam, I learned that Lego support structures are pieces, often hidden within the model, that provide stability. They symbolize the behind-the-scenes support that is essential for a success. Literally, the entire structure would crumble without that support. That is, in many ways, the role of you as Board of Education members. So as a memento of our gratitude for your support, your advocacy, and certainly the long hours volunteering for the good of our students, we are presenting you with a Lego picture frame of the theme this year, "Connect, Believe, Achieve," and a luggage tag for wherever your travels may take you next. Thank you for all that you do each and every day. On behalf of myself and the entire Granby Public School community, we will, we want to show our gratitude this month and always. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It truly, it's an honor to sit up here. So, thank you.
(applause) We will force a picture of sorts, but we'll hold that till the end. When we're looking nice and tired.
I was just going to say, if my hair's on the...
Yeah, let's wait a couple hours now.
All right.
So, thank you for allowing me that time.
Thank you. We're going to move along now to public comment. Granby community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcomed and encouraged. As is our custom, the Board views public comment as an opportunity for members of the public to share their comments and concerns with the Board, and Board members will not be responding to comments or engaging in a dialogue. As it deems appropriate, the Board may place such matters on the agenda for future meetings for discussion in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Procedureally, public remarks will be limited to five minutes, and speakers will be asked to identify themselves by name and address. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone, and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, personal attacks, or vulgarity. Lastly, we note that the superintendent is responsible for student and personnel matters. No speaker will be permitted to use public comment to bring complaints against any teacher, student, or staff member, or discuss student matters which are confidential. Therefore, the use of student, teacher, or staff names is not permitted. Any such complaints or concerns should be directed to the superintendent and her team. All right, with all that being said, as always, we start in the room for public comment, and then we move on to Zoom. If there's anyone on Zoom who wishes to make public comment, please feel free to enter your name in the chat so we can get you in the queue, and we're not sure, or we're sure not to miss you. Is there anyone present in the room who would like to make public comment?
Mike Morenco, 15 Knott's Road. He's got a couple of things tonight. I just wanted to go over trans athletes in our schools or schools that we play against. I haven't heard that we've had any, or men playing on female teams. I've heard in years past that our field hockey team has played against a team that had a male on it, and he kind of dominated our female players. I hope if this comes to light that we forfeit the game and not make our girls play against men. Let's see. I heard a middle school student was kicked off the school's bullying reporting website for overuse of the site. I don't think any student should be kicked off of reported bullying. I don't know what the extent of the excess was, but if there's an issue, I think he needs to be able to report the issue. Elementary schools, I hear that we use a program, Wonderopolis.org, which I hear is a decent site, but it also brings kids to inappropriate information for their age. I think that's something we need to look into. There's a website out there, NDEI.edu.gov. It's a site for parents, students, teachers, and community members to report DEI in publicly-funded schools K to 12. Once again, I hear that kids are still watching pornographic videos in the middle school, but they're doing it on personal computers in the school, not on the school-issued computers. So I think that's something that we need to look into. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make, please come on up?
My name is Robert Colackey. I live on Brook Patreline with my wife. I recently attended two of the superintendent's online meetings discussing the Board of Ed budget proposal, as well as the SRO program. I'd just like to say that I'm excited to hear that that's something that we were probably moving forward with. Just a little bit of perspective on myself. So after my time in the military, I did some time as a special ed paraprofessional in Torrington and Farmington, and then I've also held unarmed security positions at the middle school and high school level in Torrington. So, and then I currently work as a patrol officer in a nearby town. So based on all the discussions we've had, I think that program is a really good program for us to consider. Also, one thing I would also mention is I know the cost of that program is not small. So one thing I would potentially consider, depending what we're looking for in terms of capability, nearby towns have other programs that are similar, that are called like a school safety officer program, where instead of, which is a much less budgetary cost to the town, what that program typically involves is a retired law enforcement officer, so 20-plus years, lots of experience, that do provide, that are armed. But in terms of cost, a lot of times, they may be just paid an hourly rate and not benefits because they're already receiving benefits from their previous employment. So they could be already receiving medical, they could be already receiving their pension and their 457 or whatever. So that could be, depending what you're looking to provide, based on how many schools and locations, may be able to make that cost of one officer in an SRO program spread amongst multiple schools. And then another thing as well, depending on what safety coverage you're looking to provide, the possibility of exploring a, like unarmed security guards, which you could really call them kind of whatever you want, you could call them part of the safety team, a safety paraprofessional, safety and security associate, something like that. And I've held those roles at both the middle school and the high school level. Those positions, if desired, can be super beneficial as being a part of the school safety team. So for some instances where, you know, in the, in the current situation, there may be a situation where only an SRO might need to respond, there could be other people that are unarmed, that are actual within district, that could handle certain things when they're not able to be verbally de-escalated, and those people can be trained with some of the same skill sets that, you know, our social workers and our pairs are. So they could be trained in the PMG training, the physical and psychological management training, as well as tied in with the social workers, guidance counselors, build those rapport with kids. So I only offer that as a potential other avenue to make that money go further, or as a, maybe something to consider in the future.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you have anyone else in the room who'd like to make public comment?
Hi, my name is Michael Fitzgerald. I prepared some remarks based on an article in the Drummer, and I think it was a plus 5% BOE budget proposal at some point. It appears as though that's been changed, modified, reduced. But I want to still probably stick to my remarks. So I read the article, and it referenced several external impacts on our local budget. Occasionally, the article read as an opinion piece, so I interpreted a sarcastic description of a new state law that relieves disabled Connecticut veterans of local property taxes as a brilliant move. Just trying to understand that because it had an adverse impact on our grant list. Our state legislature was referred to as a red light district, and there were accusations that the state is shortchanging Granby, as we collectively, the town and the state, try to provide local families with disabled children with appropriate and legally required education. But if we stick to the facts in the article from the chair of the Board, there were guidelines of 3.25% for the schools and 2.4% for all other departments. The grand list was 0.28, as I mentioned, estimated, and if the guidelines were met, our mill rate would be about 3% if we were advised, be modest and acceptable. But there was also a line that cautioned if the Board of Education's original budget at 5.67% was accepted, it would require a mill rate increase of 6%, which is alarming, right? That'll frighten the town. So I need a math lesson, and it probably is from one of the other boards. The recommended increase of 3.25%, 2.4% gives you an overall increase of 3%. Makes sense, it's a weighted average. What I don't understand is if you take that 5, 6, 7 and plug it in to the 3.25, so now you have 5, 6, 7, and 2, 4, how does that become 6%? Something's odd with the math. 6% is frightening. Now, the author of this article, they have a lot of taxable property in town, so there's an vested interest in capping mill rates. However, I would encourage the town to make sure the math is right when we go through these calculations. And so I'm, I would also ask, we're in a period of critical budget negotiations, is how I view them. I don't know if that's the correct term to use, but the words "negotiation" is important. You've been issued guidelines, and you are representing children, families, and the community during the second part of the process. And so as we have an article from a rather prominent leader in the town fear-mongering around a 6% increase because of our proposed school budget, this may not be accurate. Finally, I asked, we really want to continue to under-invest in our Granby Public Schools. We have seen benchmark data and know that our teachers are underpaid, that their wages are lower relative to neighboring districts, and that as a result, we have not retained some very good teachers. As well, we are always reminded during these processes each year how our music, foreign language, and important supplemental education programs hang in the balance. They're perpetually being challenged. What I've not seen in any of the documents, and maybe they'll be in here, is we're in a current period where there's a fair amount of radical disruption up at the federal level, and it's not unexpected that that will have local impacts. So I personally do not think it's the time to under-fund our schools, and I would encourage us to invest in the Granby schools versus under-invest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Do we have anyone else present in the audience that would like to make public comment?
This is just a budgetary issue. Could be a small, could be a big one, but with busing. I know four, five years ago, the Board of Ed gave back 750 grand. It wasn't used. And I just read recently that 200 grand was given back with busing, I think. I think it was in the Drummer. But anyway, around town, I noticed a lot of buses. They're empty. Maybe two or three kids. Is there any way that you can have the bus company consolidate routes to shave a little bit more off the, I know we can't touch special ed federally mandated, but the busing, you know, you should look at that. Flanagan.
Do we have anyone else present who'd like to make public comment? Going once? Going twice? All right, do we have anyone on Zoom who would, wishes to make public comment? Thank you.
Hi, can you take my video to start?
We can hear you.
Hi, I'm Jovia West. I wanted to just first start by thanking the Board and the superintendent for your hard work on the budget. As a parent of elementary school students, I'm very pleased by the budget that you offered to the Board of Finance. And I like that it was intended to maintain staffing. I'm disappointed with the Board of Finance's recommendation of 3.25%. I think it's out of touch for the priorities of our schools and our children's best interests, and I wanted to say that I hope as the Board of Ed is considering that recommendation, that you don't meet them at that 3.25%. I think our kids, that you have our kids' best interest in mind with the budget that you presented. I have a third grader who loves strings. It is a bright spot in his day when sometimes there are not a lot of other bright spots because he can struggle behaviorally, and violin has just been excellent for him. That same third grader lost a service provider mid-year second grade to a neighboring district who pays more than us. That's the reality that we're facing. He lost a service provider mid-year first grade to that same neighboring district. It's a reality that we're facing, and I know this Board understands that reality, and I know our superintendent understands that reality, and you are working so hard to fix it, and I appreciate that as a parent, wholeheartedly, especially with young elementary school students who have a whole school career ahead of them in Granby. I have a kindergartner who is boisterous, maybe is full of energy, and his teacher is a saint because he controls that energy in a classroom full of 18 students, and he's learning to read, and I'm not always doing that at home as a working parent, so it's amazing to me. And I don't want to see my children in bigger classes. I want a budget that ensures manageable class sizes. As a parent, I want a budget that retains enriching programs for my children. I cannot teach them violin, and I am willing for my tax dollars to increase to ensure that. So I just thank you for the budget that you presented, and I appreciate your thoughtfulness as a Board, and I hope that we just continue planning for those bright spots in our children's future, and just thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom who wishes to participate? Going once? Please raise your hand now. There's a lot of you, so I just want to make sure we're not missing anyone. All right, going twice? Okay, we are going to move, I'm going to close public comment, I'm going to move along to our student representative reports. We have Katie and Sophia.
Hi. So we are currently in that dragon period in between spring and winter, so there's not a lot going on at the high school. But on Saturday, Winter Coffee House was held in the cafeteria, as well as Dill Dinkers' pickleball fundraiser, starting previously before that. Both were a great success. Dill Dinkers has been a very successful fundraiser for the Class 25, hopefully to bring down the cost of prom a little bit, and Winter Coffee House was a very nice way to showcase a lot of our musical talent at the high school. The Spring Musical is opening March 14th, and then will run from the 14th to the 16th. It's Legally Blonde, and we're all very excited to see that. A new spring dance was announced. The Spring Fling is on March 21st at 6:00 p.m. in the gymnasium. And then today was Read Across America Day, and a group of high schoolers went to the elementary schools to celebrate with the students, which was a very nice event.
And for sports, like Katie said, it's like in the middle of two seasons, so winter sports are just wrapping up with spring practices starting soon. Boys Wrestling had their state championship meet last week, and Boys Basketball had their last game of the season this Monday, and Boys Swimming has their state championships next Saturday at Cornerstone in West Hartford.
Excellent, thank you. Katie, just out of curiosity, how many students went over?
I'm not sure, maybe 40?
40?
Wow.
About 55.
55? Wow, that's fantastic, and I'm sure the elementary school kids went there.
I'm sure they went there.
Fantastic, cool. Thank you for sharing, I didn't know that. Okay, reports and discussion. We are going to hear the superintendent's proposed budget for FY 2026.
Thank you.
Catherine, if you could bring the slides up, please? So this evening is an opportunity to examine the financial needs of the school district and to inform the Board of Education and the Granby community of the impact to our school district. As you have heard me say many times since starting a little over a year and a half ago, we are just this close. We are just this close to being a premier district in the state of Connecticut and certainly in Farmington Valley. The investment in our schools directly correlates with our students' overall success, and our community's future success, home values, and keeping Granby a desirable place to live and to work is dependent on the quality of our schools. Tonight is my first opportunity to share with you the FY 26 budget. As has already been discussed, there were some numbers shared in December. That process is called the Plus One, and it's a look ahead at the one year to come, and it's a look ahead to the future for the school district. That process provides guidance, as also we've heard tonight, to the Board of Finance. Today is the first Board of Education opportunity to hear the superintendent's proposal. We are, we are doing that now, and then we have two additional opportunities to explore the budget in depth in order to inform the Board and the community before a final vote is taken on the March 19th meeting. At that time, the budget becomes the Board of Ed's adopted budget that will then go forward to our three boards and to the taxpayers to weigh in on. So those opportunities are listed here, and we will talk more about those meetings at the end of the presentation. In past presentations, I've started with some beautiful photographs of students, kids engaged in learning, staff engaged in the art and craft of teaching, and often it's in celebratory ways, you know, the good stuff, the things that we enjoy. I made a conscious decision tonight to take a slightly different approach. I frankly can't believe that I am sharing in such a public manner a PowerPoint that is filled with text. It's really not what I learned was best practice in this regard, but I have a lot of information to share with you. And so before we jump into the context, I'd like to ask you to take a slightly different angle to that process of visualizing why the budget matters. I'm going to ask that you think about a young child in your life. I'd like everyone in the room to do this, I'd like the folks joining via Zoom to do this, and I would especially like the Board members to take this as a serious exercise. Imagine a son, a daughter, a grandchild, maybe a niece or a nephew, maybe a neighbor, perhaps a student in your own classroom, and imagine the best possible learning opportunity for that young person that you care about. I'd like to ask you to think about what that environment would look like and feel like and have, contextually, in order for that child to thrive. I'd like you to think about the quality of the teacher. How much experience do they have in that particular subject? Who are the classmates? What is the environment like? Are there ample supplies? Is there up-to-date technology for 2025 and beyond? Is the space bright, colorful, positive environment, or is the building 30-plus years Is the environment one that is not only conducive to learning today, but will bring that young person into their future? Think about the skills. What is it that you absolutely want that person to know and to be able to do with confidence as they walk across the stage at graduation? Please take a moment. Please take a moment to think about that. So I'm imagining my niece. She's five. She's very curious and full of energy, and as cute as they get. She's a little sponge, and she sucks up every opportunity to learn. She's in kindergarten this year. And I see her in our kindergartners at Kelly Lane School, in our preschool environment, in our thriving RISE program for students that have unique learning needs. And I think about what Amelia and other young children like her need. She will graduate in 2037. Her little brother will graduate in 2040. So like, wow, right? I remember when 2000 was like, is the world going to crash around us? I still ask that question every now and then. That's a story for another day. But think about what our school district, what our community needs to do to be forward-thinking and grow, to prepare now, because they're leaving us in 2037 to be ready. Careers that are not yet a career, jobs that have not been created yet. The workplace is evolving more rapidly than I've ever seen. Colleges are changing dynamically. Community colleges, online learning, there's so many options. So the landscape is changing. The skills I want our young people to have, and I want my niece to have, problem solving, communication, creativity, self-regulation, mental wellness that is strong, skills that she can rely on, digital literacy, the list goes on and on. I know I can't go on forever. This could be a whole two hours in and of itself when I really get going. But I want you to know that these skills are not necessarily measured on a standardized test, but they matter to who our kids are, and they matter to who the community of Granby will be now and into the future. So think about that child. Take all we have on our plates right now and ask yourself, what does it take to create a school district that meets those high expectations that you have for the young person that you care about? That's how I lead this district. That's how my administrators that are here tonight lead their schools and their departments. We are committed to leading in a way that guides Granby forward. That's what I think budgets are about. I think that they're about fiscal responsibility for sure, but I also think they're about the future. And so I wanted to start there. Thank you for entertaining my little visual exercise, once a teacher, always a teacher. But I think it matters. So I wanted to start there. Thank you. Up here on this slide, you'll see why we do what we do. We're committed. We are right now working to create a sustainable future, balancing those financial responsibilities with the needs of our students. It's that simple. That one sentence is what our budget does. We're streamlining operations. We're strengthening in district programs for special education, for mental health. We're fostering a positive learning environment for everyone, for our teachers, for our custodial staff, for our paraprofessionals, for our teaching assistants, certainly for our kids and families. We want a positive climate that is conducive to learning. This is a short list of the things that are already underway in the less than year and a half that I've been leading the district. Many of our administrators are new to our district. We're rolling up our sleeves and we're working hard. We're analyzing and targeting instruction around growth goals for every child in the school district. If every child grows, those standardized test scores rise. Pretty basic. Develop special ed programs in district. We're doing that already with zero tax dollars, zero. We're dusting things off. We're moving people around. We're being creative and innovative. We are designing aligned schedules. It's actually done. In a very soon meeting, we will be sharing with the board that the middle school and high school for the first time will be on the same bell schedule. That was a decision for kids because that's why we make decisions. It's going to give more opportunities for kids. It's going to give more electives. It's going to share staff. And ultimately, it will do what we've been asked to do, which is reduce staff that aligns with enrollment. But you can't just do that. We can't lay people off. I don't, that's not in my wheelhouse. So we're going to reduce smartly as the opportunities present themselves, which you're going to hear more about tonight. So we have aligned those schedules so that when opportunities come up, I have a teacher with a unique certification and skill set. They could perhaps teach .4 at the middle school and .6 at the high school. We can't do that now. So it allows me to retain high-quality people because I'm giving them a full-time job, not a partial position. They stay in our district, and our kids are benefiting because they have more professionals that can teach what we need them to teach. We have done a deep dive into transportation. It's unfortunate the gentleman left because I was about to speak to the fact that our buses are full. Our buses, we probably need to add a route. But we have rerouted and condensed. We reduced lines over the years. We're now studying our transportation through the lens of finances right now. We're looking at purchasing our own buses. Is that a path we want to continue upon? And as has been shared publicly prior, Nikki Stevenson, our new Director of Finance and Operations, has reopened existing contracts, five-year contracts. I mean, folks that do this for their work understand that once a five-year contract is a done deal, it's a done deal. There's no responsibility for crack to reopen that contract, and she got them to do so. And she'll saving us almost $1 million over the life of the contract, which is this year and the following two. We are embarking on, and you'll hear more about this tonight as well, because just in the last few days, I've been digging and uncovering and pestering poor John Lambert to really better understand our technology purchasing and leasing and devices. We are committed to an evaluation of that process. Technology is a sizable nugget in our budget, and we want to evaluate device purchasing as well as what is our philosophy about device use? The board has learned a lot recently about screen time and its impact on students. So we are committed to taking a deeper dive there as well. So I do understand this was a longer introduction than is typical, but I think it important that you understand the foundation of the work. You've seen our goals. I won't belabor them other than to say that we are moving in the right direction related to student achievement, and the data supports that. Our communication plan is alive and well. We are currently in year two. Again, we have done substantial improvements in this area aligned to our plan. It's $0. Not one penny has been spent. It's just been a lot of elbow grease and really talented, hard-working people that have revamped our websites, that have created social media, that have redone newsletters and learned new skills. Those folks are sitting here tonight. So our communication plan to be, may have to be extended a year because in that final third year, which believe it or not is FY 26, we did intend to embark on some new website features. You know, those things do cost money. We also have in the plan to look at branding for the school district. You know, just maybe one bear, not four different bears, you know, things like that. Really working to make sure that we're unified in our approach. But that also would require some dollars, and we've not included that in this budget. We've decided we needed to wait a little longer for that. So tonight, I am sharing a proposed budget of 3.67. This is slightly above the Board of Finance guidance of 3.25. In our neighborhood, surrounding towns, Board of Eds have adopted budgets in the sixes, sevens, and even eights. And so 3.67 is on the low end of the averages that are coming in right now for some obvious reasons, but I'm going to highlight a couple of them here. 3.25, the guidance, would be the lowest increase since 2021. And I'm going to dive into those facts in just a moment. We are facing significant loss of grants. New to the budget book this year is a very comprehensive revenue page where we are listing every single dollar and cent that comes into the district. Just by tallying them up, you can see that there were 11 grants just a year and a half ago to two years ago that are no longer, they're zeroed out. They're still on our tally sheet because a short time ago, they were there. Those grants have all gone away. Those grants we depended on post-COVID. It has been mentioned by someone's comment earlier, we are facing a significant risk of lost funding from the federal level. I do not believe in alarmist behavior. I do not believe in raising people's level of anxiety or fear. But we do know that currently every dollar of federal money is being scrutinized at the federal level, and that is a trickle-down effect for Granby, depending on what we calculated, between a half and a full million dollars annually that we depend on to help operate our schools. We did include the SRO program. That is 4.42% of the budget. It's about $158,000. That is included here in the 3.67. 80% of the respondents to our survey said, yes, we think this is a great benefit to our school and community. Yes, we are okay with the budget being increased to support it. We had 750 people respond, and 80% were in favor of both the budget dollars and the position itself. And so I felt it my responsibility to move it forward this evening. This is a statistic that we haven't shared with the board previously, but there's been some questions in the community about, you know, Granby students. And I've explained that the data shows some shifts in the population of students and in the need of our community, frankly, the state, frankly, the nation. These increases are not unique to Granby. But EdSite is a public site operated by the State Department of Education of Connecticut. It is a public portal, and it is statistically driven and data-driven. It's a warehouse for you to take a look at. And one of the statistics that popped out to me as I was preparing the budget is that Granby currently has 55.9, so 56% of our students, the total population, are classified as high needs. More than half, some would say almost 60%, of the students in the school district are classified as high needs. High needs is defined as special education, ELL, free and reduced lunch. So this is not only students on IEPs, which we so often talk about when we talk about special education costs. This is the rising need across the community. The number we see continuing to rise is certainly in the free and reduced lunch category, and that is an indicator of economic need. So our students need more, and we are receiving less. We're also feeling the impact of three recently negotiated union contracts. Our employees are paid less than their counterparts in neighboring districts. We have renegotiated in good faith, and we are feeling the impact of those budgets in the current budget and beyond. Lastly, the new normal is the rising cost, related cost of living and inflation. Everything costs more. We certainly know that in our homes, and we're seeing that here in the school district as well. These are the past operating budgets. Here in Granby, there's so many different percentages shared. I think it can get a little confusing for someone. I know for myself, I often have to go back to the budget books and really make sure that I'm identifying the correct comparative data. So apples to apples, this is the operating budget that has been passed by the Granby taxpayers, the voters, 2021 to 2025. You can see that the lowest percentage was 2.92% increase in FY 21. I'll spare you another mental exercise, but just think for a second of the state of the world in 2020 and 2021. We were not fully open. We were still not doing a lot of things. We were still not operating at full capacity in 2021. That was just getting back. And the other thing was, there was lots of COVID relief funding. Funding in the form of grants was ample. So there's a reason that the budget was under 3%. The prior year, we returned $900,000 at the end of that school year to the town of Granby of unspent funds, not because of busing, because of all of the programs, all of the learning that couldn't take place because of the COVID pandemic. Another unique aspect to Granby that was requested of me to share is the history of the revenue and reimbursements to the town of Granby. In Granby, the reimbursements to the Board of Education go to the town of Granby, to the general fund. And so this chart here is a five-year look back for that revenue that has been realized on the town side through channels of educational funding. So let me just explain briefly what you're looking at. We budget in our operating budget for the Board of Education at 100%. We don't take into consideration anything outside of the dollars in the operating budget that we request the appropriation from the Board of Finance. We do not, as many, if not all, districts do, we do not offset our costs with any of the payments or revenues that you see listed here. We do not consider those funds on the education side. Because it is considered in the broad picture by our Board of Finance to assist, certainly with the entirety of the community, to offset that larger cost to the taxpayer. But it does not come into the equation when I present my budget to the town. So if you look up here just quickly, you could see that ECS grant is massive, right? Well, that always goes to the towns. It's a legislative decision. And about half of the educational funding from the state is funneled into communities statewide through the vehicle of the ECS. Nikki's going to shake her head now if I'm getting this wrong. Thank you. And my understanding of the ECS fund is that it makes sure our schools are equitable. It makes sure that everybody can keep the lights on and the buildings in good repair. And it's a good-faith effort to make sure that the communities in Granby are in alignment with their responsibilities to make sure that equitable education is available to all students across the state, regardless of their income or the property taxes in that particular town. And there's a very complicated formula that I'm not even going to try to learn that the state uses to give us the dollar amount. And that goes right to the town, as it does in every other town in Connecticut. But below the ECS grant, those are all things that are decisions here in Granby through the charter or past practice. The excess cost grant, which we hear a lot about, that's the special ed monies that come in. It's never enough. But once we hit that four-and-a-half-times threshold, the State Department provides us with funding to help with those exceptional needs for particular students. Regular ed tuition is like our Heartland kids, our Heartland students that join us at the high school, sit in our classrooms, and engage in all components of our school district. When the town of Heartland pays the tuition for them to attend, it doesn't offset our budget. It goes to the town of Granby, to the general fund. Special ed tuition, same thing. Students from Hartford or Heartland, we bill those costs, and that money comes to the general fund. It does not help to offset our special education costs. We're budgeting that at 100%. Pay for participation, that's when we charge families a fee to play sports. That money goes to the general fund at the town of That money goes to the general fund at the town of Gramby. It does not impact our athletic fund. We get calls from parents a lot of times about that, new uniforms or better field conditions. So I want to make it clear that that money does not come into our budget. Rental fees, we really don't charge rental fees any longer because it's kind of silly to give money to the town-for-town programs, you know, like Parks and Rec and youth services. So we really rarely charge, but there are fees as a part of our guidelines. And then the last line item a computer spoke about earlier, and that's the return, like what are we returning to the town? So at the end of the fiscal year, we, our goal is to budget as close to perfect as we can. We should be asking for the money that we need and spending that money. But there are special circumstances where something happens and every dollar isn't spent at the end of the year. Right now, I have one or two staff that are out on leave, maybe we have a sub, that's not a good example because we still pay people when they're on leave, so I don't want to mislead anyone, but we have times where we budget for a certain number of sections and we end up with one less, or we save a little money on a contract, or we don't need our attorney fees as we predicted. And in that case, there would be surplus at the end of the year. That line is the money that we give back to the town of Gramby. And it's very commonplace annually to give back money. Since I've started having conversations about requiring appropriation, and what I could find is that one year in '22, '23, we did overspend. I don't, I wasn't here then, but likely for special education, that's often what happens.
It was spent.
If you all were here, yes. And so we did have to ask the town for an appropriation of $273,000, but that bottom line shows you the revenue to the town over the last five years.
Sure, is it the town charter that the paper participation goes back to the town? Any idea why that is?
We have a policy that states that as such.
A board policy?
I don't know, Nikki, Nikki, look into it.
Our board policy currently states that the paper, the paper participation goes to the town general fund. That's the way the policy is written.
Any idea what the logic of that is?
We do not.
I think it's just that we budget again at 100%, whereas we're not offsetting those expenses. So they're saying, when we get that revenue, then it goes to the town since we're actually budgeting it 100%.
Any other questions? There's a lot of information that I've shared so far, I'm happy to pause if there's any.
And just to clarify, we're going to have lots of opportunity to just share questions and then present at the next meeting, so we can have time to digest. This is a little bit of a different angle than prior years.
Okay. This is really helpful, I appreciate the addition. And in the budget book, you will see a full page on revenue that includes all the grants that come into the district that we do use directly for the Q and D and other aspect, mental health grant you've heard us talk about. In the past, all of those grants have not been shared with you, so Nikki suggested a full list of every possible input and output in the district, so you will see that new this year as well.
Just, I'm sorry to pipe in, but just in the past too, we have lots of people ask, do you guys apply for grants? And the answer is yes, and here they are.
Yeah. Okay, so another big piece of information that informs the budget is our enrollment. And enrollment seems so cut and dry. How many kids live here? How many kids are coming to our school? But Colleen Baba knows that we watch these numbers so carefully because it's the entryway to our school district. We are always talking, particularly at this time of the year, to say, how many, how many, how many, how many kids have registered? How many preschoolers, you know, in our community here, how many preschools tell you they have kids that are coming, you know, that sort of thing? So it can be an exact science because we have a formula that we use based on the homes in our community and the new build and all of that, and we work with someone to provide us with a projection. What we've noticed over the last couple of years is that the projections, although they're still pretty accurate for the entirety of the enrollment, we're seeing bubbles pop in different age groups. And we've had just this year alone, 30 students move in to the school district across all grade levels. Every week, I receive a report, coming in, going out, just that simple. And oftentimes, we're seeing five, six, seven kids, two leaving, four coming in, three leaving, one coming in, four leaving, you know. So Lynda tracks that data super carefully, and so what I have for you here is 1702. That is different than numbers that the Board of Ed has seen in the past because that is real-time information. That is the actual number of students in our school district. This does not include students at the Bears Transition Academy, which we talk about a lot, and it does not include students that attend out-of-district placements for special ed, which we talk about a lot because we do pay those fees, but we don't include them in our total. So this number doesn't fully represent the students that the district budget supports. We have more than 30 to 40 students in some unique out-of-district settings for special education. We have students that attend Magnet School, and we pay that tuition, they're not counted here, but we pay their tuition through Q and D. We have students, next year we'll have eight, nine, 10-ish Gramby kids in the Bears Academy. So they're going to fall off my enrollment number, but they're costing us money at the Bears Academy. So it's just not as simple. I have many years doing this and lots of education in this regard, asked us Nikki and Jen Parsons in particular, and we are constantly looking at this. But this is our best projection for total enrollment. And yes, it is declining. We do not argue that it's declining. It's a matter of how much is it declining and where is it declining? So to go from 1702 to 1680, I don't know, to me, that feels a little unlikely, but it's possible. We're talking about 22 kids as we've been talking, but they're not all 22 third graders, they're not all 22 middle schoolers, they're sprinkled across the district. So it makes it difficult to reduce staff in perfect harmony with those drops. I think it makes sense when you think about that. And on this page, you can see where it's a little easier to understand is what do our class size look like? What are we experiencing currently? And that's the FY25 numbers. And what are we projecting for next year? So I made myself some notes on this one. You'll see that I have an asterisk, I highlighted the projection for kindergarten. We heard someone comment about small class size and the importance of that. Certainly, I want to underscore that comment, especially for our youngest learners. And we have restraints in our budget, we are watching that kindergarten really carefully. The 98 is projected, could go a little higher, could be a little less. I have the kindergarten going into five sections. That creates a class size of 19 or 20 kids in a class. It's a little higher than I would like, I bet it's higher than most kindergarten parents would like. Keep in mind, this is the projected number, but I may have to add a kindergarten teacher to this budget. So it's something that we have to keep in mind as we go forward. I have assumed two reductions in elementary school. You see, we're going from 59 sections to 57. And then you also can see, which I talked about during the plus one, we believed that there would be an additional reduction of 1.8. The reason it's a funky number like that is because it's not one person and two person, it's shave a point two off of this person, a point four off of this person, so that we can come up with some saving due to enrollment. But it's a science that I'm not very good at, but Jen Parsons and our high school principal and our middle school principal work in concert together to do that work. So we have the guidelines that we do follow very carefully, we have our current sections, and we have our projections here. And this is also in the budget book for you to take a look at. As a point of reference, when I looked back to last year's budget, FY25, we reduced six full-time teachers in the district, and we reduced eight TAs last year. Six teachers, eight teaching assistants. How that came to be, once we opened our doors in the fall, I could not reduce by the full eight teaching assistants. We did have to keep four of them on, or four that were unintended, which I'll talk about later in the budget cycle. But we are reducing staff as it equates to enrollment. We have committed to do that well before I was sitting in this chair, and the plus one has production, projected a reduction of two FTE annually to coincide with the Per pupil expenditure, this is calculated at the state level, and this number is updated annually, and it is provided to us. This is not a number that we calculate on our own. It is calculated statewide for all school districts, and it's the per pupil expenditure. Essentially, what does your district spend on each individual student that you educate? Our average, you can see highlighted in red, and those are listed from the highest PP to the lowest, is $20,725 per student, and that is significantly lower than the average of comparable districts, we call it our DIRG, of 22 and change, almost 23. So this brings us to something that we just can't help ourselves to do right. Boards and superintendents, we look to our neighbors to see like, how are we doing? Are we doing okay? And so how do we compare to districts like us? Gramby's PP, $20,725, it's lower than our DIRG average, which I just shared. It's also lower than the DIRG B average of $21,276. So we're spending less per pupil than almost, you know, half of the districts in Connecticut. The average budget increase across the state right now, this is real numbers, these are budgets that have been approved by the Board of Ed. These are not plus ones or superintendent proposed, these are real numbers, so it's not representative of all districts because it's only what the Board of Ed has currently entertained to move forward to its town for vote. That averages 5.42. Southfield's over eight, Windsor's over seven. I mean, these numbers are coming in really high. Couple districts in this group came in really low, and that's because they have a whole building closed for renovation, they're regionalizing for the first time, you know, so there's some unique features that dropped this percentage, but I think it would be, will continue to rise as more districts get through the process. There is a lot of conversation about our teacher salaries. I am a teacher. I know my job currently is superintendent, but anyone sees me out, I say I'm an educator. That's why we're all in this business. Our teachers and our paraprofessionals, our staff is the backbone of this school district. We would not be able to do anything without them. Cut all my supply budget, cut my technology, we'll make, we'll find a way to figure it out, but the people in the district make the difference. Out of 30 districts in Hartford County, we are second to last. We are 29th, only above Hartford, in our teacher salaries with the newly negotiated contract. We do a little better if you look at top staff, masters, or a doctorate, or stipends, but most of the teachers in our district fall into the categories that I've used here. Average number of experience with a master's or a six. We rank 29th out of 30 districts with the newly negotiated contract. Numbers are coming in, well over 14% increases over three years across the state right now. The cost of living is driving the salaries, as well as the small, small number of individuals going into education currently. So it's a supply and demand issue that's going to continue to be something we have to pay attention to. We do lose teachers to our neighboring districts, five minutes down the road, 10 minutes down the road, for salaries that are higher. I would argue it's better to work here. Our teachers love it here, we take good care of them, we have a great community, but people have to pay their bills and the cost of living continues to rise. On the flip side, Gramby Memorial High School received its highest ranking this year for an indicator some people care a lot about, some people may not, but it's an indicator worth sharing. We're ranked seventh out of those same 30 school districts in quality for our high And our achievement has been questioned, our achievement is looked at, we do have folks that comment at our Board of Education meetings that, you know, our achievement isn't where it should be. Well, we agree because we want kids to excel, we want our achievement to be the absolute best, and we're squarely focused on improving that achievement. But new this year, I wanted to share some of the achievement data, the board has already seen this, but we don't get this type of audience at those board meetings, so I thought it would be important to share how our kids are doing. We're doing pretty well, we could always do better. But Gramby's students proficiency on the SAT ranks third in our DIRG for ELI, some of our highest scores we've seen. And in our DIRG, comparable districts, we're fourth for math. Now, I am not going to tell you that I'm happy with 50% of our kids reaching proficiency in math, but scan that column, take a look at those percentages, are we really happy with any of them in any town? Since COVID and a little bit before, we started to see our math scores across the country take a plummet. We're committed to improving those scores. Our achievement is solid. Our students are learning, our teachers are exceptional. Testing keeps changing, this is the third iteration of the SAT in recent years, we've gone digital, we got rid of the writing component, the game keeps changing, the measure keeps changing, and our students need more from us than they have in the past. We're doing pretty darn good. Getting too happy here, this is getting too happy, sorry, sorry. So I think you probably know how I feel about this budget, but I wanted to state it for you. I love Gramby Public Schools, I love working here, I feel so fortunate to have the colleagues that I do. This is an amazing place to be, to work, to live, and to be educated. But we are doing a lot with a little. We're doing more with less. We're creating special education programs that are having a direct positive correlation to our budget. Our special ed increase this year is less than 1%. That doesn't just happen, that's not happening in the neighboring districts that I'm talking about. That is something to be celebrated. We are competing at high levels on our athletic fields, at our championships for DECA, our junior achievements, folks that we heard from last meeting, we're doing some really great stuff with less money, without our pay-to-play funds, without our reimbursements, without our tuition for Heartland kids that sit in those classrooms and compete on those fields and compete in those extracurricular activities. We're creative, we're thinking out of the box, and we're working really hard. We are strategic, and we are going to Kindy's New Pride Great Things for our kids with the dollars that we have. We will do that. But I also, as I started with, truly want to grow the district to be exceptional, and for that to happen, we need a reasonable investment in our schools. This is the budget summary, you've heard all of these, you've seen these numbers already. We're asking for an increase of just over a million dollars, that equates to 3.67. This is how we spend it, this is where it goes. As you've heard before, almost 80% is employee salaries and benefits. Any business, any school district, everybody spends the most on their people. I'm okay with that, that's what matters the most. Purchased services are also people a lot of the time, but we pay them differently. The SRO is in that category, that would be a purchased service. We're purchasing that service from the town of Gramby, we're paying their salary and benefits through a contract. Our nurses are paid through a contract, our Kelly Services substitutes are paid through a contract. So they're people, but they're paid in a different way, they're in that gray portion. So if you add up those three chunks, you could see that people drive our budget. The tuition is those out-of-district placements that we've talked a lot about, and the rest, I think, are pretty self-explanatory, and you can see that, well, you know, less than 10% of the budget, 9% of the budget, is all the other stuff, supplies and books and software and those types of things. And this is available to you in the budget book in a variety of ways. So the last piece of information, and I do know how long I've been talking, the last piece of information is what drives the budget? Where do the changes come from? Why do we need? Why do we need more? Why can't we just stay with what we had last year and make it work? So we're driven by, as I said, personnel. When you look at this list, I want to be very clear that not one thing under personnel is a new person. All of these people already work in our school district. They're not new people. We're not adding four teaching assistants or a director of school counseling. They are alive and well and a very engaged part of our school district. And I'm calling out their salaries because we have to pay them a little differently because those grants are going away. So the contracted salaries, that's the increase of those negotiated contracts. And benefits, or actually, it's a really good rate for benefits right now, but that's what it costs. The 100K is for four people that we thought we were going to be able to reduce a year ago and couldn't. So we weren't carrying them over into FY '26 because we intended to reduce them. These are teaching assistants on the regular education side. These are primarily people that support students with pretty intense behavioral needs. And in order to have that child be successful, and in order to have this classroom be a safe space, we need a second adult. It's necessary at 100,000. The director of school counseling has been a position here for a very long time. It used to be an administrative role. When Julie Greeney, the person that held that role, retired, we decided to move that to the teacher contract so that it costs less and has a laser light focus on the job because I don't think anyone can argue the work of our school counseling department continues to grow. So that person is a member of our school district. 30% of her salary was in the operating budget. 70% was in the mental health grant. We have to move that other percentage into the operating budget because we do not have enough funds any longer. And this coming year is the last year, we believe, of the mental health grant. So I have to gradually start moving those essential positions into the operating budget. The art thing is a little unusual, so allow me to explain. We haven't yet done student schedules, but I'm about to share with you that my proposal is not to replace a teacher that's retiring, one FTE. In the plus one, I was very much replacing this person. But given the constraints on our budget, I'm saying maybe we can think creatively and not replace this person. But I'm going to have to see an increase somewhere. And as I said, we have some employees that work less than 1.0. Well, they leave us to go work 1.0 in other districts. So it's good practice, if the employees are interested, providing them with a full time. So I'm going to just move a little portion of that tech ed position, I think, to the art department. But this is not an exact just yet. Tech ed teaches graphic design, Jen. And so graphic design is a certificate, falls under the certification of art. So we might, really a lot of careful planning. It's like a chessboard. We think we can make it work with just a slight increase, but eliminate a person. Eliminate 0.6 and the benefits to that person. So there's no ask there. Those help us make reductions. Those help us maintain our current school district. Programs are listed. We've talked about all of these at length. They're very straightforward. I'm happy to entertain questions if there are any in the future, but almost a million dollars are program obligations. Not new things, just existing as costs rise and things cost more. The next drivers are special ed, which we talk a lot about. These are new initiatives to special ed. You've heard us talk very positively about the Bear's Transition Academy. That program allows for students to stay in district between the ages of 18 and 22. We are legally responsible to educate children between the ages of 18 and 22 if they qualify per their special education plan. So if we don't have a program for them in district, which we didn't until just a year ago, we would pay that out-of-district tuition, 100-ish grand a kid, plus, you know, transportation, all of that, to attend this program in a neighboring district. So four teaching assistants are needed. We have to add four people to keep this program running because they go out on internships, they go out into the community, and we need adult supervision for those aspects of the job. And these are students that require that level of support. You know, quick math, right? We have about, let's just say, 10 kids in the Bear's Transition Academy with the eight from next year and the two Granby kids that are there now, times about, let's just say, 100 a kid, and that's probably a little low. We're talking about a million dollars to outplace the students in that program or spend 120 for four teaching assistants, some additional money for transportation. And that stipend piece also connects to Bear's, and it has to do with their work, work environment. It's a, it's a payment structure for their internship opportunities. So we're talking, I did the math. I knew I wouldn't be able to do it in front of such a big audience. $176,000 is the ask for Bear's Academy. That's less than what it would cost to outplace two kids. The BCBA is an ask. Half of that position will be paid for in the mental health grant. Half of that position will go into the operating budget. The following year, the whole position will need to be in the operating budget if we choose to maintain it. That's the tricky thing about putting people in grants. And then we've talked about everything here on the additional program improvements list. The SRO is included in this budget. French textbooks were recently adopted by the Board of Ed Curriculum Committee. With no funding, we started the Alternative Learning Center this year at the high school, but we're finding kids need an alternative route to take some of their college, college, high school credits. There's an online program, is it Virtual High School, Jen? Yeah. Virtual High School costs about 13,000 for students in that program and other students that are not in that program for a variety of reasons. You know, they need a summer class, they fail something that's required for graduation. But if we have a dedicated space for that, we can run some online learning opportunities for kids. And then we have discussed the CIAC additional days. This, what I've kept in here is 15 additional days for the athletic director so that we can safely operate a summer session and collect data on coaches and participation and field use and all the things that I wasn't able to do last year. I need someone on site to do that so that we can then come forward with a comprehensive plan. Is this a program we're going to continue into the future or not? But until I have some data on it, it's very difficult to blindly add that to our budget in the future. And then these are the offsets. In the plus one process, I knew I had three retirements, but my intention was to fill those retirements. So there was some cost savings, but not a quarter of a million dollars, not 250,000. The money there is due without savings. If we do not replace a library media specialist that is retiring, and we figure out how to do four libraries with three librarians, if we do not replace a tech ed teacher that is retiring this year and parcel out some of the components of his position to other departments, I cannot replace him. And the third one is a secretarial position. Thank you. We have a retirement in our secretarial union. There will be some internal movement, and that will open a position, and I would not fill that position. We've already provided appropriate celebration for the cost savings in transportation. That's directly from the renegotiation. And we did switch vendors and engage in a new contract this year for fuel, and that saved us 50,000. I, I promise you, I'm close. So how did I get to 3.67? What is included from the visionary budget that we shared a few, couple months ago is the school resource officer. What is included are the components to special education and mental health. They're really a non-negotiable in my perspective. The school counseling, the board certified behavior analyst, and the five teaching assistants. Four for the Bear's Academy, one for RISE. We have four students, five students in RISE, five students, thank you, in RISE. And we'll see some growth next year. And we need to have one additional teaching assistant to support those children. Likely, given the needs in that room, at least three of those children would likely be outplaced without this in-house program that was developed this year with no funding. We, a teacher left us for another district. We hired a replacement with the skill set, and I just got to keep her happy. It's pretty amazing. What we reduced from that initial look, the lunch recess monitor, which was requested for Wells Road School to allow for additional personnel during that busy time. We had asked to include department chair stipends for wellness. It's a K-12 position. And then a stipend at Kelly Lane in Wells. These are not people. These are stipends to provide some leadership capability for individuals that already work in our school district to help with evaluation. We do have a new teacher evaluation plan that requires more extensive work opportunities, writing and evaluation. The groundskeeper and the maintenance technician, those were two adds. They're no longer in this budget. We talked about that previously. And we did reduce the certified reading intervention teacher, which was a part of our overall plan to target achievement. We need highly skilled and certified people to do direct teaching. We added math last year because that was more of a need given our, our performance. But we're seeing a growing number of students, particularly at the middle and high school level, that have reading challenges. And of course, that correlates to our standardized test scores. But given the budget, we can't add any new positions. The transportation contract was a nice win that allowed an additional reduction. As I've just spoke about, I'm suggesting in this iteration of the budget that we do not fill retirement. This was not an easy decision for me. I feel strongly that the community of Granby is not a place where teachers should fear being laid off when the budget comes around. We frankly already struggle a bit to get high-quality educators for the reasons we already shared tonight. I don't want to be the superintendent that every year people worry if their job is secure. Given the current climate, not a smart move. Teachers are hard to find. High-quality teachers, we want to hold on to. So the strategy that I'm employing is if someone retires or resigns, and this is what we did last year as well, we reduced six teaching positions without laying anyone off. If someone retires or resigns, I take it as my responsibility to find a creative way to do that work without the person. So I don't love that I'm offering up all of these positions, but I think it's the responsible thing to do. Next steps for the board. If the board wishes to further reduce the budget, our team has started to identify areas for your consideration because this is not an easy job. We have squarely focused on this. We've almost only done this since February 10th, when that guidance came our way. And so we've been combing through things to give you some possibilities. If the board wishes to reinstate anything that I've included in my 3.67, then I would need to know that as soon as possible because then we'd have to find some additional funds in the budget to reinstate anything that I have presented to you as a reduction. So if you look at the list here, we have $120,000 in a technology line in the Q and D fund. To be honest with you, I didn't even pay attention to it earlier because it's always been there. But we started asking questions and figuring out that we pay a little bit for technology in the Q and D fund, which is the open choice monies that come in, among other things. And we pay for technology over, under small cap. And so we've been doing some research to figure out, like, why that is. And if small capital is an appropriate place for technology, then can I move all the technology over there? And through advisement with other boards and Mike Walsh, Nikki and I feel confident that that is an appropriate thing to do. So I can move the 120 out of Q and D to make room for something. Could be for the SRO, could be for the director of school counseling. But we have to keep in mind it does a grant-funded pool of money, and that's fragile. We cannot purchase new laptops for staff. This comes at a sacrifice, but it's one that I think we're okay with because we're trying to make decisions with the least impact to kids. So I have $174,000 in small capital for teacher laptops. That's our replacement cycle. That's what, about what we spend to replace devices as they reach their end of life. But I suggested the board that that's something we could pause. The SRO program is a new addition. You can consider removing that from the budget. We heard some creative alternatives. We can further reduce staffing positions. Truly, supplies and software and things like that won't move the needle. So we can look at additional staffing positions across the different unions, or we can eliminate programs. In this budget, I am not suggesting the elimination of any programs. Strings is alive and well. It's flourishing. I'm not proposing a reduction. Music, arts, athletics. I can't talk about caring about students' mental health and in the same sentence say we're going to reduce those programs because we know how important it is for, for kids. So this is the short list. Truly, this is a real challenge for the board because I have worked with the team. Nikki Stevenson, Jen Parsons, Chris DeGray, John Lambert, every single building department leader, Kate Weingartner for People Services. They're here tonight, and I, I just have to express my, my real gratitude. It's been a team effort. So that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to entertain questions, although the process going forward is that the board would prepare questions ahead of time. We're asking for those by Monday morning. I wanted to give you the weekend. But at the same time, that means I don't have the weekend. So we will only have Monday and Tuesday, partial Tuesday, to answer those questions. So I can't emphasize enough, if you know what questions you have, send them off as soon as you can because we need as much time as possible to get those responses to you. Topics that I know there's interest on is enrollment, staffing, achievement. And then we personalize the workshops based on the questions of the Board of Ed. And Monica has spoken with leaders of the Board of Finance, and they've asked to be able to share questions ahead of time as well. And we're happy to entertain those questions because the more we have ahead of time, the better prepared we can be to provide you the information that you're looking for. So, thank you.
Are there any questions that anybody has right now that will help them formulate additional questions in preparation for next week? I know we, everybody looks a little shell-shocked right now.
Can you repeat that exact, the exact number on the SRO right now?
159.
159.
159, 159,000, that's salary and benefits. And it is based on data from our Granby Police Department.
Does anyone else have any questions? Dave, you look like you really want to ask something.
No, I just, I would have a hard time supporting cutting the tech ed position. So I think we're going to have to find another way through my vote.
No position, devices.
No, no, she's talking about the tech.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That's a technology.
Just philosophically, I think that, that meets the needs of a lot of students, and I think they'll be in a real disadvantage if we eliminate that program.
So, may I?
Yeah, please.
So just to be clear, we've looked at the, at the schedule and the course offerings. And if I add a point four, I believe we can offer all the same classes, the same courses that are being offered now with a reduction of 0.6. There's retirement there, the 1.0. The position teaches graphic design. Jen, can you off the top of your head give it to me?
Doesn't it teach other, other skills as well?
Yes. So currently, there's two technology education positions at the high school.
Okay.
And it would require moving some of the more technical classes to one teacher, and then the courses that are less hands-on, less equipment-driven. There is a choice sometimes in the certification of the person who teaches it, such as a graphic design class, that can be taught by a teacher who's certified in art or in technology education. So we would So we would not, what Superintendent Burke, I believe, is trying to share is that those courses, we would still offer all of the same courses, it would just be taught by a different teacher if we can increase some part-time staff that we have.
So woodshop and that kind of stuff would still be going?
Yes, yeah, it wouldn't allow us to expand those opportunities, but it would allow us to maintain the current level.
There was no proposal to expand them at this point anyway, it was just maintain status quo, no expansion right anywhere.
No, there, there is data to support that students want more sections, but we haven't been able to offer them, and we haven't had a climate where we could ask for additional staff either.
There's been additional asks for that?
We can never meet the number of students who want some of the courses that we offer, but they're meeting their graduation requirements.
So we can dive into that a little bit more at the workshop, actually, there isn't many things we can share.
I think you know it's already shared, but I'm just going to say it publicly, I have concerns regarding the library media specialist. So I would like a better understanding of if we'd be, if we'd be able to manage three librarians across four schools, to me that's...
That's what the schedule would look like.
Right, 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 how that could be done effectively, if it could be.
We can offer that at the workshop. One standout point I could share now, just for the board's consideration, to add back the library media, that would be about sixty-five thousand dollars that we would have to find elsewhere in the budget.
Does anyone have any immediate questions right now?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. Really appreciate you kind of walking us through all of this, right? And there's a lot, there's a lot here, so shell-shocked is definitely a good term, right? When you started off with talking about, you know, picture this and picture that, that resonated with me because that was one of the reasons why we consciously, people know this about me, we consciously moved to Connecticut, and we moved, and as we were looking at towns, we gravitated towards Granby and we settled here with Granby, and as most people know this about me, I am very deeply rooted within the community and everything else, right? The less is more, I think is just the new world, no matter which industry you're in, I think that's just the new normal. I myself am doing the job of like three people, other people that I know are doing the job of four people. So, and to Dave's point, right, I also don't want to see some of those things adjusted, especially that are student-facing. So I think we need to come to this with a healthy balance of looking at what we can do, right, where my vision of moving to Granby also is able to keep me in Granby, and can we do it in a way where it doesn't affect programs for children, doesn't affect teachers, doesn't affect anything that's frontline-facing, right? So is there anything on the backend that we can possibly do? And I'm not saying that you haven't looked at it, right, I'm just, you know, can we find other opportunities, right? Can we look at redundancies, can we gain efficiencies somewhere else to kind of help improve so it's not adversely affecting the students, the teachers, the quality of education that I myself came to Granby for? So, and then the other thing is, I just want to, not getting into partisan politics or anything, but it's like, as a community, we do need to kind of work together, and I think we are, there's a lot of rhetoric that's going around. I think we just got to keep it to the point where the people that are truly trying to work together and help each other out, like, we don't, we take their help, right? We just kind of got to keep everything else at bay and just say, all right, we're all going to work together for what's best for the community, and just keep everything else at bay instead of start pointing fingers at other people around here, that's it.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any additional questions or comments? All right, thank you, obviously, this is a lot to digest, if anybody's able to get their questions in earlier, to give, to give poor Nikki, Sheri, Jen, everybody, the entire department a leg up, that'd be great. So, thank you for that. Business requiring action, and thank you, thank you Superintendent Burke for all your work on the presentation, I'm sorry, I'm kind of moving, a little, a little light in the head, so. Business requiring action, do I have a motion in regard to the draft minutes from February
Move that the Granby Board of Education approve the minutes from February nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Did I skip one, nineteenth?
Did I skip one? No. February nineteenth, that's right.
February nineteenth, Board of Education.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Okay, that motion carries, thank you. Committee reports, board standing committee reports, curriculum, policy, technology, and communication met tonight, Karen?
Yes, I'm going to be very quick, so, thank you to Assistant Superintendent Jennifer Parsons, she shared with us some information regarding that the second-to-last professional development day is coming up on Friday, it's the only day when the K through twelve teams get together. She shared with us also some information about the scheduling committee, and more details will follow as they are hammering out the last details now, the team is. She talked to us about the major curriculum-related accomplishments since 2020, and some policy connections with the committee members, a breakdown of curriculum assessment and instruction, and how resources are selected, and she also talked about the proposed curriculum review cycle with us, it's a five-year cycle. And lastly, we ended with some policies that we talked about, some of which will be coming forward soon to the Board of Education.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Does anybody have any questions for Karen? All right, thank you. Finance personnel facilities, they, the minutes are attached in the back of your packet, and we'll be meeting again on March nineteenth.
Yeah, nineteenth.
Nineteenth already, yeah. Okay, other board-related reports, crack cave, anything going on there? Do we have a day on the hill next week?
When is the day on the hill?
March twelfth.
March twelfth.
Yeah, okay. And that's an opportunity for us to speak with our legislators, we've actually been in pretty close communication with, with our legislators this year, so conversations are happening there in regard to a variety of issues. So hopefully I will be able to attend that event next week. Granby Education Foundation?
They're continuing to look for sponsors and teams for the Granby.
All right, and that reminds me, Katie or Sophia, if you guys are planning on going to the Granby, let me know, okay? If you guys are setting up a team, I believe we have some best costume winners last year, you don't have to dress up like Sesame Street characters, but if you are planning to go, let me know. Calendar of events is attached in the back, just a reminder, Legally Blonde is coming up soon, so get your tickets, tickets are available online, those events are always super fun, so highly recommend you go. Do we have any board member announcements? All right, action items, Madam Secretary?
Submit questions prior to Monday morning.
All right. Thank you. Superintendent's report, Sheri?
Just barely, just a couple quick updates. We held two community conversations, they were well-intended, attended, and it was fun, it was fun to hear from community members and open that dialogue, it was very much a two-way conversation, I look forward to doing more of those in the future. We had learning walks, which was really great, and Katie O'Neill attended, so thanks Katie for doing that. As we've heard, Read Across America Week is happening, music in our schools is happening at Kelly Lane this month, little mini concerts to showcase some of our musical talents. There's no school this Friday for professional learning, parent-teacher conferences are happening next week, so be sure to check your calendars for that. And I did just want to take a second to highlight, and I brought the handouts for the board members, and this has been emailed out to all of our middle and high school families. As part of our ongoing commitment to social and emotional health for our students, there are two evenings, you do have to attend both evenings, and it's being offered by Justine Ginsburg, Compton-Farthington Valley Health District, for middle and high school age parents on March thirteenth and twentieth in the evening, so that you can learn and be certified, I believe, in youth mental health first aid. So we really encourage members of our community to participate. Our next meeting is March twelfth, and that is a workshop, it is not being held here in this room, the workshop is being held at the Board of Education building just through the parking lot, the conference room and central office, and that will be our first opportunity to dig into some of the questions related to the budget, so, thank you.
Thank you so much. With all that, do I have a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
No one ever wants to discuss that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
It's us.